Good morning, it's 9:07 Wednesday, January 28th, 2015. I will call the Dallas City Council Agenda Meeting for today to order. Welcome all. We will begin with our invocation, followed up with our pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Climen. Praying for us this morning is J.A. Armstrong III, a pastor of Community Fellowship Church in West Dallas. Pastor Armstrong is the pastor of Community Fellowship Church. He is a graduate of Baylor University School of Business with a degree in Finance and currently pursuing his masters of divinity from Princeton Theological Seminary. He worked at City Hall and Waco and the Community Development Housing Department, so he knows the city business well, created a plan to decrease the homeless population. As the pastor of Community Fellowship Church of West Dallas...
I understand, sir, this is the only place I can get a live shot from your corner.
If you let me in up here, I'll be happy to be on that right there. Thank you Pastor Armstrong for being here. All rise. Let us pray.
Republic Broadcasting.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for truly this is the day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad of it. Father, before a decision is brought before us and before discussion begins, we pause to recognize you as the source of our strength and the strength of our life. Father, we thank you for this council who through your sovereignty, you have divinely selected to lead this city. We pray that you would give them strength to do good, to seek justice, to defend the poor. Father, we pray that you would give them wisdom, wisdom to decipher between good and evil, beneficial and not. Father, we just thank you for those who you have selected. And Father, we pray that you would give them grace to handle the burden of leadership, and that no weapon formed against them shall be able to prosper, and that every tongue that rise up against them shall be condemned. Father, we thank you God, just once again, for this opportunity. And Father, we pray that for all who have the burden and responsibility of leadership, that you would empower us to lead with the heart of a servant rather than the hand of a king. It's in the mighty state of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I declare this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I did not say, I said West Dallas, but this is a... We will begin with open microphone speakers this morning, Ms. Reos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your first five registered speakers are Marvin Crinshaw, Brittany Olson, Chantel Rashford, Howard Garrett, and Kermit Mitchell. All the first five registered speakers will be served this evening, also retired and retired. Applicable persons will be out of the first day of universal prayer, made on the day of the Lord's return, which was to mention to me. Individuals are allowed to speak when the time is up, and others can leave as they may without this order, as long as addressed to the hall, it's to remain always. If you have any handouts, if you have not just given them what you have now, support that you go ahead and hand them to our officers on the side side, as it does affect your speaking time. Again, your first speaker is Marvin Crinshaw, and Mr. Crinshaw will be followed by Brittany Olson.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Crinshaw.
You left the floor already.
We do.
Marvin Crinshaw, June 22, 34, Mountain Lake Boulevard. And Mr. Mayor, I am a person like this, and everything that I've done at the City of Dallas for the last thirty-five years, including the negotiations on the board writing lawsuit, when I agree to something, I agree. And I would do business well with welches. I know when you refer to that, we had a conversation, took one thing wrong, and I have to do it, you're not swell. But you got some welches here. And while everyone was celebrating the fifth anniversary of the South City of Dallas Canyon, I was picketing down in South Lake, Texas, a country called Metal Last Service Association, which has been listed as a downtown. While I was out there, I noticed that something strange going on, and there were a lot of people there who were, you know, I didn't know it, I first thought they were part of the company, and it was not. And one time I was out there, that's when that storm came in, and it was getting cold. One of the men came up and said, "Marvin, we want you $200,000." And I'm just looking, sort of, they talk about. And so the next thing came, and we go, we make up $500,000, and that's it. And then they go for $700,000. And you know, this is about the same time that the official price, and kind of all that cash went out. And I was thinking, I said, "I don't know, I'm okay with that, he can explain that better than I can, because he has a job, and I don't need a guy, and there's no way I can explain someone finding $500,000, $700,000 in my house or my bank account or whatever." But as time went on, and I'm, I'm not gonna finish this today, because it's something stupid, but at the same time, once I started doing my little analysis, and looking at different, looking at different things, I knew something was going on right, okay? Then when that storm came in, during that time, and you said I got sick while I was out there protesting. But I finally found, I saw some people out there that I recognized, one of y'all recognized a leg on the floor, but I'd seen a leg before when I was in Dallas, in Dallas City, I was a very beautiful leg. But what happened though, Mr. Mayor, is that this is associated with the City of Dallas. And I come to mind out of that team here in the City of Dallas, and ladies come to that at the end of the year, or they do something. And I had a friend of mine that I had worked on a police brutality case with him, was a former DEA agent, I contacted him, and I was telling him exactly what was going on. He said, "Marvin, did you get your money?" I said, "No, I didn't get my money, I was making it get my money because..." But I did take the money they offered me, because I'm not gonna be taking no cash from anyone. And while I was there, I'm something off at this point right here, while I was there one day, I was out there picketing, and a lady came out, and she was there, she worked there, she came out, and she did this to me, okay? The next day I came out there, and I told her my money, and I said, "Oh, my check, I'm ten forty-nine," and she came out, she gave me thumbs up signs, several people did that, with the City of Dallas involved in it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Crinshaw. Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, if I could, yes, Mr. Crinshaw. Mr. Crinshaw, if you would, we're not gonna move text in, I'll just ask you, and I'll ask the mayor to visit with you at some point, so he can hear the rest of your concerns, okay? Mayor, you can do that on your schedule.
That'd be something.
Thank you.
Your next speaker, Brittany Olson. Ms. Olson will be followed by Chantel Rashford, Howard Garrett, and Kermit Mitchell.
Mr. Mayor, before the speakers speak, can we ask them to be close to the mic, so some of them can hear.
Thank you.
My name is Brittany Olson, and I live in District 1, and I'm here this morning to sum up my year of campaigning. Our campaign to stop fluoridation in Dallas, we had an opponent, our opponent was much bigger and stronger. Physically, our opponent was hardly present, only five very major pro-fluoride presentations this whole year. The pro-fluoride advocates would not come forward to open debate. We did not need to overcome science, logical reason, medical, good medical practice, or a valid moral issue. The fluoridation program contained these elements. The real opponent to our campaign was status quo. If any of you vote yes to purchase the hydrofluoric silic acid, we are not spending the money entrusted to you prudently. We're not helping the poor unfortunate children, we're not doing your job as a sworn elected official, we're just asking for status quo. We commend Star Trek and Adam Madrona for standing with Sheppe, and we thank Dwayne Carraway for telling us we had a bill. We believe more of you will make the right and honorable decision and vote no to the purchase of this neurotoxin. Your votes will make history today. Since 1999, 400 communities have shut off the fluoridation tap. Albuquerque stopped fluoridation in 2012, in large part because the raw water had .5 hearts per million, and it's time for Dallas to do the same. This last year, we brought many things to light about the fluoridation program, like the fact Lula naturally opposes fluoridation, and they oppose it because Hispanics and blacks are disproportionately affected by fluoride. We made note in council vote to halt the fluoridation program in Dallas, and we highlighted the fact Park City has never fluoridated, and they do not have a cavity crisis. After this recorded vote today, several more will see the truth about fluoridation, and they will know this council has the opportunity to choose a longstanding practice that has been held up by propaganda and not research. Many will also know you did not have a public hearing or whole town halls to get their input. These are just a few of the things revealed during this campaign, and they are not going back in the dark. When at least eight of you vote no, so I do number forty-four today, this will be a win-win-win situation. You will save the city money, you will make Dallas the largest city in America to stop the harmful program of artificial fluoridation, and the people that believe and want the fluoride will still have fluoride freely flowing out of their tap due to the high fluoride level in their raw untreated water. If you came into this chamber today thinking you were going to vote yes, please repeat this. Will you really be able to justify this action to the seventy-two percent that would be noted for fluoridation in the D Magazine poll? Your status quo vote will not end this conversation about fluoridation in Dallas, it will make the volume louder. Thank you.
Chantel? Howard Garrett and Kermit Mitchell.
Good morning, I'm John Tollarachian, I live in District 10. Some of you here may be pro-fluoridation, and be happy there already is fluoride in the water. But as you guys and Brittany also said, seventy-two percent of Dallas voted in the D Magazine, and they said that they are not pro-backing fluoride to the water. I'm gonna show you guys a video today, and there are even more people that are also against it.
Mr. Mayor, here my gentleman, I'm asking you please to get it. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Garrett will be followed by Kermit Mitchell. Kermit Mitchell will be the final speaker this morning.
Good morning, I'm Howard Garrett, the Dirt Doctor. I live in Lakewood in Dallas. And through my column of the Dallas Morning Dew, my books, and my radio show, I'm basically in the business of helping people be more healthy. I've gotten involved in this issue because I've learned some things, and the three main things I like to point out to people, and I have a lot of experience with the first one, is that this fluoride that we're using in the city water is not a natural fluoride. It's an acid, it's an industrial waste, toxic, industrial waste that comes from fertilizer industry, phosphate manufacturing, and I know an awful lot about that, if you wanna talk about that. Second point is that we already have a decent, very decent level of natural fluoride in the water here, so for those of you that think that we need fluoride in the water, we got it. And my third point is that we've got the wrong delivery system, the way we're currently adding this acid. There's no research anywhere that I've been able to see that shows that ingesting fluoride is the way to help teeth. Direct application to the teeth is effective, make the teeth harder, and so what we have there is toothpaste and other products, and what we need to do in the City Council and the City of Dallas to be a great big leader of the United States, teaching and educating how people can more effectively use that approach if they think fluoride is the way to go. I really appreciate the fact that you're looking at this seriously, I think that Dallas can really make a great big statement to the United States and to the world by doing this, by being the largest city around to make the change. And if you'll look at the details, and this group has really done a great job putting more experts from all around to explain it to you, and I appreciate the fact that you're listening to it and at least considering it, at least folks out there. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to help you, thank you again for considering it, and let's make a big important decision today. Thank you very much.
Good morning. I got some questions for you. Good to see you, a pleasure down here, I appreciate you coming down. I think this man knows more about soil than anybody in the country, and I know a lot of us calling dog, so I appreciate you telling us your concerns about this. Let me ask you this, do you have a brother?
I do have a brother.
What's he do?
He's a dentist.
Oh, he is? Now, maybe you all have had several talks about this.
My brother is one of the best indo-odonists in the United States, Uncle Garrett, and he and I have had some knockdown dragouts about this issue. He believes that fluoride is a horror, and it's a paranoid situation that starts at universities when you learn from people that you respect, and you take that into your business, it's very difficult to get away from that. And I know a lot of the people that you have heard from have been from the dental community. What you have to understand is that dentists are not chemists, and there's a whole lot over to this issue about fluoride use, and what's the best way to handle it.
Well, and that was my concern, and when I got into this, I'm gonna tell you, I got into it because of the money. Because we were looking for budget funds, we're looking for ways to cut down our, the water system is the one system that we increase every year, and it's a tax, that's what it is. We tax the water system, let's find a way to cut it out. I saw this as a way to drop, to bring us back a million dollars. The more I got into it, the more I read, it is, we don't need that extra fluoride. And nobody knows, from what I've read, both sides, how much fluoride we do need. So, we're just, to me, we're just, we're wasting a million dollars on point two one-thousandths of percent of fluoride per, per billion, it's just being washed down the drain. And that was where I was coming from with this, and I'm glad to spoke to that. You also have a, uh, let me think real quick, what you, I have for you. In your, in your business, in what you do, these are things that you know about, you analyze it, you know the soil, you know the dirt. What we're getting today is not pharmaceutical grade fluoride.
No, it's one of the nastiest chemicals that are around, it actually is kicked off when they make phosphate fertilizer. They treat the phosphate rock with sulfuric acid, and the gases that are kicked off during the process are so toxic that the EPA got involved, and everybody was worried about killing people, because it was literally killing plants, plant material all around these manufacturing facilities. So they came up with a way to scrub and collect this toxic residue, and then somebody came up with a brilliant idea to put it into the water system. And it was without question an extremely toxic acid product, there were some others besides the one that Dallas uses, but they're all in the toxic category. I think that the biggest incremental problem that we have as a city, as a state, and as the United States is water quality and quantity. And the right decision here can really go along the way of moving Dallas in the right direction in that regard.
Do you know anywhere else, anywhere where they use this chemical that they're putting in our water today? Where else is it being used?
Oh, it's used in a lot of other cities around the country, around the world. More and more cities, one of the websites that we made available to everybody shows all the cities in the United States, all the cities in the world that aren't doing this, and it's a lot more cities than most people realize, and we need to get on board. We'll just be the warriors.
And I'm saying, what if they weren't putting that, that chemical, that fluoride, in our water, where would they be putting it?
Oh, they have to put it in the windfills, and it would be considered toxic waste, and we'd have to be paid for all the blueprints.
That's what I wanted to hear. Also, I know, and you've studied this, if you go all over the country, you'll find people that do not even use fluoride, that their dental records are better than ours. We're down closer to the bottom, they're up top, they have great dental records without using fluoride at all. So, and I'm, and we're not talking about taking our fluoride out, we're talking about not putting anymore in. I think we've got enough today to do that. But I, thank you for doing that, and I appreciate your words, and hopefully we'll get some back. Thank you, God. Thank you, Eric.
Can you give me a handout from Mr. Mitchell?
Good morning. Can I agree to the fluoride issue? No, I can't. But my issue is I come before you. It's fluoride enrichment and discrimination. Fluoride enrichment, because the sales price and the purchase price of the Omni Dallas Convention Hotel are anything. The $650 million on the basis that $170 million of the cost overruns had to be recovered. The alleged $170 million in cost overruns did not exist. The premise of cost overruns was allegedly used in an attempt to have KGN Enterprise to pay $170 million over the cost of one false pretense. The $170 million in cost overruns was made at the same time as the seller was using excess reserve funds to build additional parking for the hotel. This fact is further demonstration of the hotel excess reserves, mainly therefore had no cost overruns. They were needed to collect from the sale of a hotel to KGN. The sales purchase price for the Omni Dallas Convention Hotel was increased to $650 million on the basis that $170 million in defense fees were due to be paid by KGN Enterprises. The premise of defense fees were allegedly used in an attempt to have us pay $170 million over the cost on false pretenses. The police and fire in this pension fund has been required to mark down this portfolio assets from acquisition costs to appraised value. Concurrently, the sales price for the Omni Dallas Convention Hotel has been at cost of $470 million, which is above the appraised value to other dealers. The appraised valuation of assets for the police and fire in this pension fund is contradictory to the cost valuation of asset for the hotel. This is alleged as an attempt to induce KGN to try and pay more for the hotel than it is appraised. Housing management, Kermit Mitchell himself has indicated he intended to move into one of the units of the hotel as a primary residence. The sales price has been raised to him as he made an offer to buy it. Further, the seller expressed an interest in selling, but the seller withdrew the hotel from the market after Mitchell made his offer to buy it. The fluoride enrichment was actually committed by the city manager. We have requested a meeting of you, Mr. Mayor, and the city manager to discuss the sale of the hotel. This request is made this summer before the service. There was response from the office, but no meeting has been requested. We respectfully maintain that resources paid by the taxpayers of Dallas not be used to defend these allegations. The denial of public defenses on the basis that the allegations are reasons beyond and below the office limitations required by statute. Justice delayed is justice denied. We want a meeting.
Thank you. We'll proceed with our morning agenda.
Okay, your first item is approval of minutes of the January 14th, 2015, if you see the agenda.
A motion second, any additions, edits? Hearing now all favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay, we move now to your consent agenda. Your consent agenda consists of agenda items number two through forty-two, and addendum items one and two. Agenda item number two is corrected on the addendum. Agenda item four is called for individual consideration by Councilmember Grayson. Agenda items twenty-seven, thirty-one, and thirty-two are called by Councilmember Madrona for individual consideration. And agenda item number thirty-three is called by Councilmember Casey for individual consideration. Therefore, remaining on your consent agenda are agenda items two, three, five through twenty-six, twenty-eight through thirty, thirty-four through forty-two, and addendum items number one through two.
Thank you, Mr. Crinshaw. We have a motion to approve. We have a second, any discussion? Thank you, Mr. Anack.
Mayor, just on item number forty-five, the consent agenda, he has someone explain it right, and turn it the wrong way with the school zone, there was Martin Wyers on there, is that deleting that from the school zone, or did they extend the school zone? I was kind of confused. Could I get someone to explain it to me? Twenty-five.
Good morning. What's the question?
Of Martin Wyers, the school zone? Is that deleted? For the school zone, is that deleted incorrectly?
Twenty-five. No, we're just extending the, extending the school zone there.
Just extending the school zone.
Yeah, just extending the coverage of the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to second, any other discussion? Hearing now all favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay, your first item is...
No, we're just extending this, extending the school zone there.
Extending the school zone.
Yeah, just extending the county's ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing now all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay, your first item is, uh, individual consideration is called, is agenda item number four, authorized number one, an acquisition contract for the purchase, implementation, and custody of a people counting system for park and recreation in the amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And number two, a five-year service contract for maintenance and support for the people counting system in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars. Eco Counter Inc. will be the contributor for those are of two. Councilmember Grayson, call the aye.
Thank you, Ms. Grayson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Willis.
Good morning, Ms. Grayson.
My question on this pertains to the backup information, and it says the insight afforded by these analysis will enable park and rec staff to better serve the future outdoor leisure needs of visitors at those four trail locations. What does that mean?
Ms. Grayson, this is, uh, basically having the data on our trail usership in this first phase is will be a basically a management tool that will allow us to be more proactively managing our resources, specifically in, uh, addressing maintenance, mowing, litter pickup, uh, things like that also. It'll, uh, we'll have that for the first time that will assist us, the park board, city council, in allocating cap, future capital resources for future trails, uh, and, uh, highlight the need for future, uh, trails, not just pulling trails, but also athletic fields. Uh, the neat thing about this system is we're gonna, the first four sites that are listed here at, uh, Keyst, uh, White Rock Lake, Katy, and North Haven, we'll be able to move the hardware, the trail counting hardware from other sites in the future, maybe, maybe it's sort of after six months period. So we'll be distributing these and redeploying these all over the park system, not just the trails, but also at athletic complexes. And then eventually, we'll be probably coming back to you, uh, for approval of the trail counting system in all of our recreation centers. So for the first time, we will have our data, uh, on the usership on our major park facilities.
Well, thank you for that information, Willis. That isn't really where I was going with my question, though. I don't have any problem with the people counting system, and I think it's a good idea for you to put it in and have the ability to measure the usage. My concern goes to the use of resources directed toward these, what, four trails in particular? Because they're the first ones that are going to be counted. So when you talk about allocation of resources, you're going to be directing resources, what, to these four trails? Because I would tell you, I think that Creston Ridge Trail probably gets just as much use as the North Haven Trail. So frankly, I don't want to see resources flowing to other trails when perhaps some that aren't listed out here as your first efforts, aren't going to get those resources.
I, I think, um, you know, ultimately, uh, Creston Ridge and other trails all over the city will be. And then, again, it could happen within the year. Uh, it's not necessarily a case of redeploying, we wouldn't be taking resources from another park site or, uh, area to put, for things.
But you're going to allocate resources based on the information you glean from this system. And so what I want to know is, is that these first four trails listed here, are they going to be getting resources that the other trails or other park and rec facilities aren't going to get for quite a while afterwards?
I, uh, we're not going to leave other park facilities or trails short on what's currently going along the way with maintenance or litter pickup.
So you're saying that the future outdoor leisure needs of visitors at these particular trails is going to be more about litter pickup? And more about how you service those trails based on the number of people that use those trails?
Right, and, and they mean that we need an extra, an extra cycle of litter pickup, uh, and to un, and, and we'll have the information to understand why, uh, the litter may be, uh, worse at one particular park site versus another. Uh, same on, uh, mowing, I don't anticipate, we're not going to redeploy mowing, but maybe in a future budget year, we've got data, said, wow, this trail has one point three billion people a year, uh, versus a trail that only has two hundred thousand. It just informs us on what, where the, uh, uh, major needs are in the park system. And, uh, not necessarily redeploy, but in future years to see if we need additional resources.
Okay, 'cause where I'm going with this is, for instance, I don't want to have some trails have less mowing, fewer mowing cycles, and other trails get more mowing cycles based on information that you glean by putting it in some, measuring some locations first, years ahead of others. I just don't want to see that system used in that way so that certain trails, for instance, are getting more resources than others. I don't want to see more mowing cycles at some trails than others because all the trails need to be good.
I understand your concern. Uh, mowing cycles are established strictly governed by our, our budget, and I think we're, we're ten days approximately now. I don't see that we can, are going to reduce mowing cycles or necessarily increase them, uh, but...
Everybody should have the same mowing cycles, is where I'm going with this. No matter how many people use the trail, okay? Some trails don't need to look weedy because fewer people use them. Do you see where I'm going with this?
Yes, I, I did, I understand.
Okay, that's my concern, is the use of resources.
We're, uh, we're, we're gonna have numbers for the first time, uh, uh, and I think, again, we'll, we'll be able to use this information to make good, good management decisions and future good budget decisions.
Well, I agree with you on that, I just, you know, please...
But it, it will not result in...
Uneven allocation of resources.
Of, 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 of resources.
Okay, and I have your assurance of that. That's a yes. I have your assurance that you're not gonna unevenly allocate resources. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move approval.
Move second, Mr. Kingston.
Uh, I will amend for denial.
Uh, amend for denial. I think that's just voting no. Unless you wanted to accept that amendment. She had decent first of all, accept it. Yeah. Put your mic up, Ms. Grayson, thank you.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kingston, you're, you're voting no, or you're moving a denial of the subject?
Either way, it depends on which one you're gonna debate first. It's essentially the same motion.
We got a motion to approve.
You either have to make a substitute motion to deny, or you're just gonna have to hold on.
Not substitute motion, that's what I made.
Okay, so you accept it?
To deny?
Yes, okay, then, uh, you want to make a second motion, a second, uh, motion to deny? Uh, we have a second on that.
I'll say it for discussion.
That's true. Thank you, Mr. White. I mean, I'm shooting Mr. Kingston.
Mr. Runners, your answers to Ms. Grayson's questions completely obviate the need for the equipment you're seeking. Name the management decision that will be affected by this data. Mowing? It's not mowing. Maintenance? It's not maintenance. What is it?
Well, litter pickup, uh, for one. Uh, another, uh, um, use of this information would be enhanced security, perhaps, uh, where, uh, we know that the trails are heavily used, uh, we'll have information that we can, uh, share with the police department for enhanced sec, trail security and athletic park security. Uh, and then another possible use of this information would be in, uh, gathering or, um, selling sponsorships, uh, for a park, particularly at an athletic field, where we will, for the first time, have the data, uh, to sell to a, to use, uh, uh, for a potential sponsor or, uh, uh, naming sponsor.
Well, um, I, I, that last one's the first thing you said that actually makes some sense to me. And I, I don't mean to be rude about it, I really, but if, if we're, here's what your data is gonna show. If they were, if the counters were out there today, on a Wednesday, very nice weather, you're gonna find tens of thousands of people on each of these four trails. It's gonna be nasty Saturday, you're gonna find no people on any of these four trails. The, the other thing that's going to happen within the next few years is we're going to actually connect some of these trails to some other trails and create something that looks like a system. And the usage is going to go up very dramatically. Um, and so, what, what my concern is, is that we get some counts for this disconnected system, and then those numbers are used for our policy decisions that are anything other than build out the trail system as fast as you can. Because really, we're not making finely tuned quantitative decisions right now. We're making big qualitative decisions about the trails. Connect them up, connect them up as fast as you can, pour lane miles of trails as fast as possible. This is a quarter million bucks, it's a half mile trail. You're saying, we're giving up a half mile of trail and we're gonna count people. That's, that's kind of the problem, I think. None of this is, none of this data is going to change any policy decision about trails, I don't think. Um, because for the foreseeable future, with the funding that we have in place, the, the message from council, I believe, be wrong, is gonna be, go, 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 dill, 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 dill. So that's, that's the only thing that's a little bit odd to me about, it just seems premature to be doing finely tuned data collection on a system that's completely disconnected. It's like, it, it's like having a traffic counter on your driveway, you know? It doesn't connect anything else, and the only people who use it are the people who live there. Um, that's part of the problem with our trail system right now. Katy Trail massively is because a ton of people live around it, but it would be a lot better if it actually connected to something. And in the meantime, I'm fighting every freaking week to try to get the Katy Trail extended. You know, that's a project that's ten years old. If it had been a convention center hotel, we'd already be talking about selling it, you know? And, and, and the lack of urgency in this building about building trails is really unacceptable. Um, I'm hoping to see that change. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And I, I hear my colleague, Mr. King, has a passion towards building out the trail system, but I don't agree on some points he made there. Um, this council and our, and our park board have, uh, really asked, uh, all of our, uh, agencies to provide us data that we can use to make good decisions. This is a good implementation, a, a good opportunity for us to implement that request. Um, and this isn't a one-time, uh, uh, one-day count of the trails. Now, we used to do that in the past, as a matter of fact. The way we used to count trails is send a staff member to, you know, fully care to sit, I'm gonna try and count people. Um, so, I, this is, this is quite an improvement over that. Um, this system will, uh, enable us to not count these four trails, but count all trails, uh, count them over times a day, days, weeks, this is a year, and it's an ongoing opportunity. Uh, it's just having to do the personal trails that we're doing there. Um, the other things that, um, I, I think is important to recognize is for the build out of our trail system, we're very dependent on partners, uh, for funding, and those include partners of both the Dallas County, who have been tremendously thoughtful to us, uh, the state and the feds. There's a lot of money that comes from a lot of direction to help us with our trails. One of the most important things we can provide those agencies when we request money is the amount of activity on these trails, especially living around or asking for transportation money. And when we show that the trails are being used in lieu of our crowded highways and our busy streets, then that helps us gain additional resources so that we can expand our trail system and connect it up and make it a really good integrated circuit and integrated trail system that we're working for. So I'm enthusiastic that you've taken a database approach as opposed to a, um, uh, an approach of what we think is the best, you know, we think would be not tested here. And, um, I am enthusiastic about the fact that the Parks Department, uh, has really stepped forward to demonstrate that they can justify the monies that they're asking both this council's and other agencies so that we can build out our trail system. I'm excited about it. Um, thank you for being with us, and, um, I'm looking forward to having it on the North Haven Trail, which of course has several funding opportunities on board, uh, as well as other trail systems. The Creston Ridge Trail is also, uh, I showed that with Ms. Grayson, and, and absolutely, and I think the county on that trail is a very, uh, highly used trail, has a lot of, uh, areas of support. And we, of course, want to make sure the resources deployed there are appropriate as well. So, thanks for bringing this to us, Willis, and you have my support.
Thank you, Mr. White, and Ms. Madrana.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my issue is not so much the trails, but did you imagine that these were gonna be coming to the recreation centers?
Ultimately, this will be the third phase of our implementation plan, probably in one or two years. Uh, it's our intent. So first phase are these four trails, second phase will be expanded trails and athletic complexes, uh, in certain park sites around the city. And in the third and final phase, which will be the most expensive, uh, is, uh, putting in, uh, people counters and reporting on recreation centers.
Yeah, and that's why, uh, to me, I'm concerned because you say it's gonna be expensive. Um, aren't folks that participate in recreation are still supposed to purchase a recreation card? And then when they come in, they scan, so that's how they're counted?
Yeah, but that doesn't count. Everybody that comes in, there's a lot of people that don't scan their, scan their cards.
So, they're not scanning their cards, why? They don't? I mean, the, I mean, the data you get from there is, you scan your card and if you're registered for a class, you get, okay, these folks are, are being counted for Zumba, or these folks are doing, you know, arts and crafts or at their school, and so, to me, you know...
Community meetings and event, reservation events primarily are the ones that are not scanned in. Users of the facility for recreation are scanned, as you said, but it's, it's also that these, this, these other larger groups in the evenings and on weekends that are renting the facilities.
So rentals from when I used to be there, I know that we used to count, have accounts of how many you expect to be there, and also, um, uh, community meetings, and we would, uh, input the data, or there's a way to do it already. And so, to me, to put this in the rec center would be a waste of...
I, I, I'll be glad to get you more, we're probably a year or more away from it.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Be glad to get you a lot more information on that.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Mr. Madrana, Mr. Pat.
Willis, um, when you said the counts of the trail, and, and we got trails coming, you know, to the south part of town, you know?
Yes, sir.
We got trails by U N T, A T and T Trail. So is that, how far down is that planned to integrate those trails? We have a trail also.
We haven't identified the next round yet, but we'll certainly, we're gonna, I mean, we'll redeploy the, uh, counting hardware throughout the city, including trails, uh, in Southern Dallas, absolutely.
So, please have read the, the Florida, are you saying when the funding ended, you have to come back, ask for more money?
Uh, no, sir, so this is a, this is a, uh, most of this contract is for the installation of the hardware, accounting, uh, hardware at four trails. We will be able, after six months or twelve months, to take that hardware out and re, um, um, establish it at another park site. And we have five years of support and maintenance for the software, the counting software. So over the next five years, we'll be redeploying the counting hardware throughout the city.
Is there a reason why you did not include Clive Warren at Park, Clive Warren Park?
At, at what park?
Clive Warren Park. I mean, because counting, you know, I know that there are different interations coming in there. It's very difficult to have people that's doing the counting from one direction. I heard your last statement, a lot more can be sold advertising, so I thought that might be a good use of that type of technology.
We'll, we'll get there eventually, I, I don't, I can't give you the reason why that one wasn't selected for phase one over Katy Trail.
Is that part of the senior responsibility of, uh, the people at Clive Warren? Who's responsible?
Clive, Clive Warren is, uh, there's totally the responsibility of the, of the Woodall Rogers Mark Foundation. I don't, I don't anticipate us actually installing hardware at Clive Warren Park because that's their, uh...
So they're not our responsibility, not...
Yeah, that's their responsibility, and, and they do a pretty good job estimating because they've got such a large staff.
Yeah, yeah, I was down there in the region when they had the urban, you know, award. The problem they had to me was that they could not get a, adequate account. People cutting in, so there's so many different ways to go in.
Right.
That part, and also, when they try to sell advertising, one thing with Mary is concrete here. It's very difficult to get money for advertising, but you couldn't get bank for your money because you know where it relates to advertising, you know, have people's business in that part. So I do want to let the party say responsibility, but I think we should look into it since we do put money into that part, so, this is my suggestion.
Okay, uh, Ms. Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my question, I, I think you've kind of, you know, addressed this a little bit exactly. So would you put these in the permanent, those locations, is that correct?
There's, uh, two parts to this. One is across the trail, there's an embedded, uh, uh, count, uh, hardware that's under the, the concrete or, or asphalt, and it'll, it'll be repaired. And then there's a vertical post, uh, with an infrared beam next to the trail. We'll leave the, the pieces under buried, but...
We'll leave the, the pieces under buried, but we'll, we'll take the vertical post and move that to a new trail or an athletic complex and put a new, uh, embedded piece in the ground.
Okay, but when you analyze the data then, when it's the, the days that are there, you're gonna look at their weekend day, weekdays, good weather days, bad weather days, and so that, and to Mr. Keaton-
We'll have, we'll have all that information. We'll be able to determine whether it's someone on foot or a bicycle, what time of day, in which direction they're going.
Okay, so you'll be able to-
And we can equate that with, with the weather.
Okay, and then lastly, so when we move forward, like with the North Haven Trail, are you just gonna automatically add these to trails, new trails that you build? Instead of, you know, going, if, if the plan is to have it in all the trails, will you incorporate them in?
Uh, right now, uh, uh, our intent is to redeploy, reallocate these on existing trails. But I think it's something as we move forward with new trail capital projects, we'd make a lot of sense to install-
It seems like a big system to install with the, with the, with the new trail and going forward.
That's actually, that's a good idea.
Okay, so that you're not having to go back and maybe save a little bit of money, um, in that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Cause I'm looking forward to the North Haven Trail moving into my district, and I know there's other trails that we have on the, on the plan. So I would just put this part in those, you know, for, for, if we're all in agreement that we need to use this kind of counting system, but just incorporate it in the new, just in the new trail.
Thank you, Ms. Gates, um, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Ryan, I have two questions I want to ask you. Only the district that was selected, was there a particular reason? Is it because they have trails, the existing trails already set up?
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms.-
Of these four, the, the, is there four districts that are selected?
Uh-huh.
Here, four, nine, eleven, and fourteen, is it because they have existing trails already?
Yes, ma'am, so, so those districts, uh, District Four would be the Keystone Trail. Nine would be the White Rock Loop Trail. Um, eleven would be, uh, North Haven, and fourteen would be, uh, Katy Trail. So we're just, we're required to kind of be more specific about the allocation per district.
Okay, and what is the outcome of the end?
What is the?
What's the outcome?
Outcome is the data that we've, uh, discussed that we can use to make better management decisions. We can use, uh, to justify, uh, capital expenditures in the future for implementing our trail system, uh, the circuit, the trail circuit, uh, that we're moving into. Also, uh, data that can be utilized for grants and donations and for potential sponsorships. I, I don't, I wanna, I don't wanna emphasize that, sponsorships right now, but it is information that if we ever decide to move forward and seeking sponsors for trails, having that data will put us in, into a, a, a much better position than we are today. Or all we can do, give is a, a, a rough estimate.
And, and last, have you, have you set with AC, have you looked at, uh, is there a markup for how this device is going to look, or?
Uh, there is not, I have some photos. Basically, it's a, it's a steel post about this tall rectangle, uh, you know, sort of, uh, natural-looking, uh, brown. So, uh, I don't think there's gonna be, it's, uh, it's, it's almost gonna be unnoticed, I think.
Okay, and then pushing people to it, do they go and fill out something, or do they go, you know, I just-
So it'll, uh, as, if, with this marker, and we'll, I'll use this standing post here as an example, on the side of the trail, probably three feet off the edge of the sidewalk of the concrete paving. People will just, uh, run, walk, or bike compliant, and it automatically captures their movement and the direction that they're moving.
Okay, so that's, you know, for, for, it's more like a tracking system?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairway.
Thank you, uh, just one of those, I want to thank you and Park Department for being able to, okay, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Grayson.
Thank you. Willis, you said it'll help you make future decisions on capital expenditures? What do you mean by capital expenditures? Do you mean new trails? Do you mean connecting existing trails, or what is the?
Yes, ma'am, all that, so for example, we're seeking, uh, we're starting to roll out a, a program for, uh, to create a grand trail around Dallas with extensions in, through, uh, through all parts of the city. Uh, we're looking for partner, private partners and donations. So this will give us the data to present to potential donors, uh, large and small, to justify their donation uh, to implementing the, the trail system.
Are there any other kinds of capital expenditures that you would be referencing?
Yes, so in a future bond program, if we can come to Park Board and City Council with hard data that the trails are utilized by seventeen point one million people a year with hard data versus wild estimates, I think that would be a, a good planning tool to have.
Oh, I do too. I just wondered, what was the range of capital expenditures that you're talking about? Is it money only to connect new trails and get new segments, or?
Oh, no, it would be, it would be new linear trails, extensions of existing trails, as Mr. Keaton said, and also connecting trails. We have, we have a hundred and thirty files of trails in the ground right now, but there aren't good connections between various pieces of them. For example, the Katy Trail and the Strand, Trendy Strand Trail.
Would it be improvements to existing trails?
Uh, yes, for example, okay, that's good. If we have, if we find out on the White Rock Greenbelt Trail, which is currently eight feet wide, that it is the most, second most heavily-used trail in the city, that gives us information we need to consider expanding it to fourteen or sixteen feet wide.
Okay, that, can you name me any others? Any other types of capital expenditures?
Uh, I think-
Would be like widening the trail?
Yes, widening the trail, um, uh, connecting trails, extending trails, and then ultimately new, new trails.
Okay, thank you, Willis, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Godwin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thanks for the opportunity. Good augmentation of both sides. Are, are there any security features to this? Can the police department utilize any of this stuff?
Absolutely, we have, we've already had a conversation with the, with DPD. Uh, they're excited about, uh, this data that we can share with them to, again, uh, we're, we're very interested in increasing trail security and safety with, uh, with bike patrols. Uh, this will help them allocate, uh, their resources in the future.
Can they peer in on this? Are there any cameras associated with the counting?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Are there any cameras associated?
Uh, there, there are no cameras in this contract, but that's another thing in the future. But, okay, good question. So that, we will have the data here now to justify, uh, potential installation of cameras on the most heavily-used sections of trail.
Uh, my only real concern here is, is just the money. I just think the city has so many great needs in terms of money, and I see that price tag, and it's hard for me to round my money around and see if we're really gonna be able to gather any very worthwhile data that's gonna justify and expand this.
If, if it helps, Councilman, uh, we did a, just a, a rough estimate, uh, the only, uh, way we have to count users on our trail system now is to put our staff out on the side, uh, and stand there all day and night clicking the users as they go by. That doesn't capture the direction, and it doesn't capture whether they're on bike or, or on foot. Uh, our estimate just for White Rock Loop Trail alone, for a year's worth of, uh, staffing or interns, is about forty thousand dollars a year just for one, uh, one ten-mile section of trail. So if, uh, uh, you know, if you can do, do, if, if you do the math and compare that, uh, uh, to this contract, and multiply that by four trails, that's already up to, that justifies the hard cost. Uh, but we've got, we'll be able to reuse and redeploy this hardware throughout the city in the future. So just, uh, forty thousand rough cost of having staff and interns out capturing this data for, for one of the four trails.
Do you perceive any reduction of FTEs, or has it resolved, had this system in place?
Any reduction?
In FTEs in our, rather than being out counting, if you historically have been out counting, maybe we could-
Yeah, well, we've, we've never, we've never done that because we don't have the FTEs to, to, to dedicate to, to something like this, so, uh, so we're currently not gathering the data other than just kind of rough estimates. Working with our partners, friends of the Katy Trail, uh, have estimated the use of their trail, and that's all the information that we, we have, we're not capturing the data now.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, I just wanted to add, as President of our board, um, when I was in that, I was amazed at the dearth of information that we had. Uh, the, the lack was stunning, and I don't know how you run a system this large without data. So, um, as we think about spending millions of dollars in our trail system when we need to, to be able to raise that money privately or publicly, I think it's important to have data, so, thank you. Who will take the motion? Mr. Keaton and Mr. Grayson?
I'll take your, I'll my motion.
Okay, who have a motion to approve, uh, that Ms. Grayson said? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion is carried, thank you.
[applause] Amendment number twenty-seven. Authorized acquisition from the state of Texas of approximately three thousand six hundred forty acres for a green land located near the intersection of Interstate Highway Thirty and Interstate Lewis Street for a new entrance portal at the homeless assistance center with a bridge against the location project, not to exceed sixty-nine thousand and under sixty-four dollars. Councilmember McDonald, please.
Thank you, um, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Please.
Uh, I guess Ryan or whoever needs to be up here, please come. Was this part of the original plan for the new entry?
It was.
Was, um, so this was within that budget?
Yes.
You're not spending any extra money on that part?
Correct.
So the portion there, what I'm concerned about, you know, I've been worried about, uh, the feedings and, and everything in the area. So is that portion that's being built there, what is it gonna be? Is it gonna be a hangout spot? I know there's a lot of folks hanging out in St. Paul right now, uh, it's very dangerous. Um, are these folks gonna be allowed to hang out there and not actually be inside the bridge? Cause that's not actually inside the bridge, am I correct?
Well, we, what we've done is, it's a triangular piece, and so the widest part of the triangle is up against the pavilion area, which, you know, you need to almost go into the bridge in order to access. And so, this actually has been bedstocked along, uh, the I-thirty side, and so it's actually now incorporated within the canopy of the bridge.
Okay.
So it's not a hangout area, as a matter of fact, one of the reasons why we needed to acquire this to avoid that.
Okay, so is this area larger than the total?
It is not. Uh, again, the largest part of the triangle is up against the pavilion, that's within the, uh, campus of the bridge. But we are working with the executive staff of the bridge in order to see if we can accommodate the feedings from the parking lot rather than on St. Paul. Alright, that's what I'm leaving, thank you.
Excuse, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Brennan, I, I, I missed that last statement. Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, the second discussion, Ms. Davis.
Yes, I, I have one question. Bernie, as you look at the facility, the free entrance population flow, uh, what are the long-term, if outgrown the number of people on homes, what have you looked at, are they planned long-term?
Yes, actually, um, Councilmember Allen and I are working very closely with the Metro Dallas Homeless Alliance, all the continuum of care providers and the shelter providers. And we are, have been very successful in being able to move people. If we're too full at the bridge, then all the shelters are working together to make sure that people are accommodated in the evenings.
Um, I guess you're gonna have to continue to make it that, cause we've got them hanging out in different areas.
Yes.
On highways, underpass, um, um, I gotta move with Senator West, but we gotta deal with some of these issues. Some of them are just, they're, they're hanging out on highway with tents, uh, clothes, hanging out on the overpass of some of these highways, which I think is extremely dangerous. Uh, so how are we looking at those individuals?
You know, it's a continual challenge as we look at those all over the city, and the crisis intervention team, DPD's been very helpful in accommodating those particular situations, but it's just an ongoing challenge.
Well, you know, and, and I, I'll say this, we had a city facility, I think we could accommodate those individuals better because we had a health and human services department, well, we moved them in-house. Since we don't have, we still have it, but it's not its own department anymore, I think it makes it extremely hard to deal with some of the, I guess, the hard to reach. Uh, and I have pictures in my phone where there are, um, there are, there are thirty back, thirty to downtown. So somehow we're gonna have to deal with that conversation.
Right, much of your challenge sits with state funding for mental health, which has been reduced over the years. And so, all the way across the board, you have a scarcity of resources for mental health provisions.
So, so, and so the conversation has to be, um, um, I know that commissioner has, I know that committee, I haven't, I haven't, I've used a couple of meetings with this one, but they used to try to talk about some of those issues. Because, I mean, this issue is growing, and somehow we're gonna have to wrap our arms around it. And it is, so those people don't like going down to the bridge, or to do these?
Correct, um, you know, the bridge is a free-flowing, it's, you know, access point for everybody, but you can't keep them there. It's not a detention center, and it's not a incarceration point, so.
Okay, so, so at this point, then we just have to kind of, what, crisis intervention?
Yes, crisis intervention on particular issues, and, uh, then we regularly meet with all the partners, you know, to address different issues that have come up, uh, and many of you have provided the information on specific situations.
Now, when it comes to highways and bridges, that is, what, what issue is that? Should they, can they speak on highways and bridges?
Well, again, crisis intervention usually comes in and helps us out with those situations.
Okay, let me, I, and, and I guess, and I, and I, and we can take the tour of Senator West, because, I mean, this, you, you, you can't, we can't continue to tolerate this, that they're speaking on other highways and bridges. So somehow we need to deal with this situation at some point, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in, in your scenario with the bridge, do you have anywhere in there of possibly moving the bridge?
Uh, I don't think any discussions have been had about that at this point.
But, I mean, I, I think it was too small from the first day you built it. And I think that's something we possibly need to be looking into, and give it off of that freeway. The, the property that you're gonna use, is it actually on the bridge property?
It is part of the bridge property.
It's the same, they're, they're together, they're?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, and it won't affect the property at all?
No, no, this is a very small sliver.
It's in back of it, then?
It's, it's actually to the side of the new entrance, closest to the freeway.
Oh, oh, on the freeway side?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. I'll ask us to, to keep focused on this agenda as opposed to homelessness in general or if you don't mind.
On this triangle of the back part of, is that fifty-one feet wide?
Ashley, come up and answer.
It is. The length portion is approximately a hundred and fifty-one in length. And fifty-one point two eight width.
Wait, so, and exactly what are you gonna put inside that space, and what is gonna come? And, and it's so narrow, this is triangle, it's so narrow, trying to hide me, you know?
It's very narrow, and actually what we're working with the bridge on is putting a little community garden there. We have provided, um, a, a hard fence, a brick fence, a fence on the side of the freeway. So it's now inside the, the bridge property.
So, you said you're thinking about it with a community garden, or we are gonna do that?
Um, we're working with the bridge staff to see how we can do that.
So, it just be a community garden only, nothing else?
Nothing else.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fairway.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mayor, and I, I don't want to be very brief in, in addressing the fact of, uh, growth and move forward. Mayor must stay pretty much on the top of it. Include the, the, and this is Mayor in the AC, this includes the suburbs, when we're talking about the homeless and Dallas problem that we're having, and, and all of that, because folks like Frisco and Allen and those folks, we're, we're bringing in all the homeless folks here, using our resources, and I just like us to make sure that we- And I just like us to make sure that we, if we talk about homeless, let's talk about these suburbs that don't have it, and which we are intaking their problem, and we're using our resources here in our city to, to address homeless and move, move forward. Bring those folks to the table as we talk about homeless in the entire region, and spread the finance out and the responsibility to, to more of the Dallas.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Allen.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would be supportive of, uh, of this agenda. I, um, I had the honor to, uh, do a count last week over that location at the bridge. And it's important as we do this, I know this is not an ad hoc or a time, but this is about this entryway and what this means. And where were we, uh, two, three years ago with a thousand people maybe spending the night? Or today, when we did the count, it was in the three-hundred range. And the reason I point that out, Mayor, has been your leadership when it comes to supportive housing, working with the Dallas Housing Authority, so on and so forth. The number of homeless is down, and people moving into homes is up. Uh, that's why it decreased, uh, with, uh, Mayor Caraway, or, uh, excuse me, Mayor Caraway, uh, Councilman Caraway, former Mayor Caraway, here riding with these suburbs. But we have one of the leading, uh, advocates for that with Ms. Mitchell. Her leadership, her guidance in bringing in the suburbs and, and working with them, uh, is unparalleled. What a leader we have. So, after we're gone, she will still be here, uh, giving guidance and directions. So, uh, we're blessed, and again, I would be strongly in favor of this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. So we, you had a motion, right? And a second? So, yeah, that's right, we have a motion, a second. Um, hearing no further, um, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any motions carried? Uh, excuse me, what? You made the motion? Okay.
That's a good one.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, thank you, that's good. Thank you, that's good. We have one opposed. Okay. Um, next item.
Agenda item number thirty-one is an ordinance abandoning a portion of Bennett Avenue and portions of, portions of Pittsview Avenue to Pittsview Associates Limited. The abutting owner containing a total of approximately seven thousand nineteen square feet of land located near the intersection of Pittsview and Mission Avenues and authorizing the quitclaim. Councilmember McGraw, call the item.
Move for approval. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any motions carried?
Agenda item number thirty-two is an ordinance abandoning a portion of Palmer Street to Pittsview Associates Limited. The abutting owner containing approximately eight thousand one hundred, one hundred twenty-eight square feet of land located near its intersection with Pittsview Avenue and authorizing the quitclaim. Councilmember McGraw, call the item.
Move for approval. Thank you, uh, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Uh, hearing that, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any motions carried?
Agenda item number thirty-three is an ordinance abandoning a portion of Palmer Street and two adjacent street eastwards to T.C. Uptown Associates Limited. The abutting owner containing a total of approximately six thousand four hundred ninety-six square feet of land located near the intersection of Palmer Street and Old Rogers Freeway and authorizing the quitclaim. Councilmember McGraw, call the item.
Thank you, Ms. Keeson.
Uh, move to delay consideration of this item indefinitely until, and we'll bring it back pretty quickly, uh, after the zoning is done.
Second.
A motion, a second, uh, to de, to defer, uh, delay, excuse me.
Delay consideration. I don't know. Warren, is there a difference that we need to be aware of?
Well, if you're holding indefinitely, that's fine, but if you want to hold it to a date certain?
I don't want a date certain, I need the zoning done first.
What's fine? No, what's the two of the words?
Uh, you can, you can make a motion.
Move to hold the matter under advisement until the zoning has, has been done, that is fine.
What she said, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Oh, and Mr. McGraw, a second. Right, so we accept that. Any discussion, hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any motions carried?
We move now to agenda item number forty-three, consideration of appointments towards accommodations. You have elected council appointed to the House of Finance Corporation Board, R.C.C. Halton, Halton, designated by Councilmember Halton.
We have a motion. We have a motion, a second. Um, any discussion? None. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any motions carried?
Agenda item number forty-four is authorized a three-year master amendment for the purchase of hydrofluoric acid to be used for the treatment of potable water. Roseanne Crawford Nutrition LLC, lawless responsible bidder of three, not to exceed one million sixty thousand eight hundred dollars. We do have more individuals registered to speak on this item. Your first speaker is Lawrence, Lawrence Walinsky. Lawrence Walinsky. He is coming forward. James Williams will follow. We do also have a John Bentley, Mr. Bentley unfortunately could not be here, but he has on record told me that he is in favor of the item. So you have their name.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. Morning, Councilmen. My name is Dr. Lawrence Walinsky, out of the three, four, oh, one Lee Parkway, Dallas, Texas. I am the dean of Texas A&amp;M University Baylor College of Dentistry, an institution that has been present in this community for a hundred and ten years. I stand before you today to request that the city council vote in favor of continuing the practice of fluoridating the city's public water supply. It would be a tremendous disservice to the citizens of Dallas, especially our children, if this public health service is discontinued. Thanks to the evidence-based science, we know that early in life, when teeth are forming, having adequate levels of fluoride available for incorporation into the new teeth make them much more resistant to tooth decay. This is also true in the teeth that first erupting into the oral cavity. They're porous and easily absorb fluoride. Taking advantage of this developmental period in children's lives increases the ability of their teeth to mineralize for the amount to harden and in turn increase the resistance to tooth decay. Because of community water fluoridation, having access to cavity fighting substance is simple as taking a sip of water. This is such an important health benefit that the American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry recommends fluoride supplements for children as young as six months who live in areas with suboptimal fluoride content in their drinking water. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention touts fluoride as one of the ten great public health achievements of the twentieth century, and volumes of scientific research indicate its benefits. As you all know, fluoride naturally occurs in water and soil in varying levels. These levels can change depending on the region and time of year where the water is sourced. Those who oppose water fluoridation are concerned with fluoride's toxicity. Like any naturally occurring substance, when consumed in excess, the harm can indeed outweigh the benefits. When fluoride levels in water become too high, there is an increased risk of pitting in the teeth, bone tenderness, and a higher incidence of fracture. That's why community water fluoridation is so important, because it regulates the amount of fluoride in the city's water supply with the goal of maintaining an optimal level of point seven, point seven parts per million. This is the Department of Health and Human Services recommended level. Millions are exposed to this concentration of fluoride with no negative or adverse consequences. Let's compare this to something found in seventy percent of the kitchens throughout the world. Iodide, a reduced form of iodine, which is added to table salt. Iodide is essential for thyroid function, immune response, even skeletal and nervous system development.
Sir.
Yes.
You have another, any, remember?
Move to extent.
Move to a sit-stand, please go ahead.
Thank you. But when it's consumed in amounts exceeding the early recommended levels, health issues surface such as goiter, hypothyroidism, and acute poisoning cases, burning in the mouth, throat, and stomach. Does that mean we provide a diet for ourselves and our children completely devoid of iodide? No. To take the analogy one step further, complaints that there is too much iodide in our salt and questions why we even add it, as in our diet, are never brought up. Moderation is the key, the same is true of fluoride. Ceasing fluoridation is counterintuitive to improvement, considering dental decay is one of the most common childhood diseases, and it's responsible for an estimated fifty-one million school hours lost among our children. Discontinuing the fluoridation, water fluoridation would save the city a little more than a million dollars. This saving would be noteworthy, but the cost to our youngest citizens would be far greater. And again, as I came before you before, I ask you, are you gonna deny the same benefit that you had as a child growing up in this community, to the children of this community? I urge you to support continued fluoridation of the water system. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Your next speaker, James Williams. Mr. Williams will be followed by Kevin Regis. Will be the final speaker on the item. Quickly say your identity, I just want to break it.
I'm Dr. James Williams. I started practice in Dallas, Texas, fifty-five years ago. I know what every one of you are here for. Every one of you are here to help the citizens of this city. Now, I've studied dentistry all my life. My father was a dentist, my brothers were dentists, my brother-in-law was a dentist. We got a hundred and eight, a hundred and sixty-one years. Uh, when, uh, I first went into practice, the dental school system required a dental examination before the first grade, you'd be in the first grade. We worked ourselves silly getting these rotten teeth taken care of. Now, if you think these kids with teeth that decay and rotten, if you think that's enough misery and pain, I can't describe it to you. I can't describe it. In nineteen sixty-five and nineteen sixty-six, nineteen sixty-five, sixty-six, they had a boat, uh, to put fluoride in the water. Well, it's about thirty of us dentists that we got beat down on it, and that was passed. And we've had that for forty-eight years. So, everybody, kids, if you're under forty-eight years, you have the protection of the optimum amount of fluoride in your drinking water. Teeth are built from age zero to eighteen. If you pass eighteen, you're not gonna get any better fit, because once the tooth is formed, you can't get fluoride inside of it. Half the fluoride has been invented, and that does the article. But, uh, these mysteries, I mean, you take a, 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 a six-year-old kid and you gotta put a forceps on there, hook it, forceps behind, but kid hadn't slept all night. Mama's over there just, they're just on the edge. It's just pure hell. I lived it, my father was a depression dentist, I saw that, I hate dental decay. I mean, literally, when I went to dental school, I carried with me a gallon of charred, half-full of teeth and full can of formaldehyde. It wasn't that a big deal. I mean, you're gonna save a million dollars. The suffering that it is gonna come about, it's just, it's just, we're the guys that's gotta get these kids out of this suffering. It's pure hell. I'm, I'm telling you, uh, I, I just can't imagine, I just can't imagine this great city, this great city, so large, twenty other cities to, to just abandon this program. It's, it, it makes absolutely no sense. There's spin studies that for every thousand dollars you spend, you save thirty-eight to thirty-nine hundred dollars. Thank you.
That's a point of personal privilege, thanks for coming down, he's a good member of our church.
Your next speaker, Kevin Regis. Mr. Regis again will be the final speaker on the item.
Hello, my name is Kevin J. Regis, um, I reside in District Two. Um, be honest with you, I had a much different speech than when, than before these guys came up here. Um, I would like to point out that someone did say something that was true. You guys are here for the people. You guys do do a service for the people, and the most tremendous thing that you can do for the people is to stop fluoride. Here's the deal, now it's... I say it like this. When, this is Dr. Paul Kind, a former chemistry professor. He says, when your argument is weak, they'll go for the argument, they'll destroy the argument, they'll leave, they'll have you leave the room crying, because your argument's complete destroy. When your argument is strong, they'll go for you. They'll go for a more emotional side, as the gentleman before me just did. The kids are in pain, the kids are in pain. Yes, the kids are in pain. But I ask you today to not just listen to dentists because they're dentists. When you go to the doctor, you don't just go to the doctor and listen to anything that he has to say. You hear him, he gives you a prescription, and then you go home and do the research yourself to see if this medication is okay for you. Have you guys done that? I highly recommend that you do this. Don't just listen to dentists because they're dentists. You guys are all intelligent people. You cannot, no one can sit where you guys are sitting right now without being intelligent. I strongly urge you to be intelligent today in both know on this agenda. The wisest thing to do, for any man, any woman, any child, anyone, the wisest thing to do is hear both sides of the argument. Throw fluoride, anti-fluoride, weigh them out. Honestly, weigh them out. Don't just listen to this guy, listen to this guy because they told you to. Honestly, weigh these facts out, and then make a decision. That is wise. Thank you guys so much for your time, God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, take a motion in, in a second. You want to make it? Okay, we'll make a motion, Mr. Kedane.
I'm open to deny this agreement, uh, with, with a court to purchase fluoride.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw, a second under that motion. Discussion, Mr. Kedane.
Yes, thank you. Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I've studied this a lot more than I need to. Uh, I didn't do one of these, could be an expert on fluoride. Uh, the EPA gives us an amount of seven one thousandths of a percent maximum fluoride we use. And we're, we're already up to five or better, and who's to say that that point two percent is gonna help much more or at all? And we've, we've got a chance to save the water department over a million dollars, which we've been taxed every year. Water department, uh, raises their prices. Maybe there's a way we could cut those prices, and I'm not saying cut them, uh, to jeopardize the effort. What we've got now in our water is, is good. They keep saying that the fluoride is what helps, uh, run away the cavities. Well, you ingest that fluid, it's taken into your belly, and you eliminate it, so I don't know what it's, unless you put it on or spread it... So I don't know what it's, unless you put it on or spread it on, I don't know if it's helping your teeth in any way, shape, or form. So that's why I think that what we can do here is we've got the fluoride, and I believe the young lady, uh, that spoke earlier, uh, said it is a win-win situation. And, uh, we both win in this situation. We've got the fluoride and we save the city a million dollars in our water system, which could go somewhere else and maybe reduce that amount next year. Uh, dental hygiene is the way you cut cavities. I've been taught that all my life. Keep your teeth clean and, and, and floss. That's the way you reduce cavities. It's not by using fluoride. So, uh, you know, I'm just, I've got very adamant about this. We do have the fluoride, and we've got enough medicines to take care of any fluoridation we need. So I just hope, pray that my colleagues will go along with me, and we'll save our water department this funds. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Carroll.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I respect Howard Garrett coming down and listening to his radio show over the years. But, you know, this really isn't about unofficial nima toes or Gary G used that he talks about on radio. This is really about hard science, and I just can't be disrespectful to think that Howard's had his lead on that subject. Uh, Dr. Lawrence Wolinski, thank you for coming down, sir, and I have respected the President of Texas A&amp;M Baylor College of Dentistry. He's in favor, folks. He's in favor. I have received emails from over two hundred dental organizations, American Medical Society, scientific groups, and, uh, Dr. Wolinski says it's beneficial. I believe him. So the preponderance of the evidence, I think, is in that we should continue to fluoridate our water. Um, I've spoken with other people. Nobody's really doing this around the country. Nobody's really doing this around the world. Wouldn't you think that there would be more studies, independent studies, you know, to, to try to ferret out what, what is the truth and not, not is truthful? So, uh, I, I've looked at this thing every way. My dentist is for it. My parents, they did not have fluoride. They've spent a fortune in their mouths. My sisters and I, we've spent very little. I've had maybe four or five cavities, baby teeth, and regular teeth my whole life. I drink water fluoride out of the tap every day. And, you know, I, I just don't see that the evidence is on the side of those. I candidly and frankly, I just think it's general science. You know, why on earth would we wanna turn back the clock and go backwards and really join kind of a flatter society and move fluoridation? Because I just feel like science has, has, has spoken about this again and again and again. And I think it's time to vote yes and keep this in our city water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion and a second to deny item fourteen. Um, we'll take a record vote. Um, so if you're voting yes, you're voting no to item fourteen. Okay, just to be clear. Item forty-four, forty-four. Forty-four, okay?
All in voting? All council members are present. Voting in favor of the denial are Councilmember Madrona and Councilmember Cadine. All other thirteen council members are voting against. The motion fails, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to entertain, uh, a motion.
I surrender.
Pass, second. And Ms. Gates, second. Thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Uh, any who opposed? Two opposed. Okay, thank you. Motion carries.
Your next item is agenda item, item number three. It's consideration of accordance of the Dallas Home Office International Airport Board Directors. Proposition is one, five, eleven.
Thank you. I'll entertain, uh, a motion. Uh, Ms. Judge Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, uh, move.